Ladies and gentlemen, at this time, please place all electronic devices to vibrate. Mr. Majority Leader.
Recording in progress.
Good afternoon and welcome to the stated meeting of October 27th, 2022. I am Majority Leader Keith Powers. I'd like to thank everyone for joining us today. If you'd like to follow along, the agenda for today's meeting is posted on the City Council website.
Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Abreu.
Present.
Ariola.
Present.
Aviles.
Presente.
Ayala.
Present.
Barron.
Here.
Botcher. Okay, thank you. Brannan.
My God, I'm here.
Brewer.
Here.
Brooks Powers. Caban.
Present.
Carr.
Here.
De La Rosa.
Here.
Dinowitz.
Here.
Farias.
Present.
Felice.
Akeem.
Gennaro. Gutierrez. Hanif. Hanks.
Present.
Thank you. Holden.
Here.
Hudson.
Present.
Joseph.
Here.
Kagan.
Here.
Krishnan.
Here.
Lee.
Here.
Lewis.
Present.
Brooks Powers.
Present.
Marte.
Here.
Mealy. Menon.
Here.
Moya.
Present.
Narcisse.
Puiso.
Nurse. Jose.
Present.
Palladino.
Present.
Wrestler. Richardson Jordan.
Present.
Riley.
Present.
Rivera.
Present.
Salamanca. Sanchez.
Present.
Schulman.
Here.
Stevens.
Here.
Botcher.
Present.
Ung.
Present.
Velasquez.
Present.
Vernikoff. Williams.
Present.
Wrestler. Gennaro. Gutierrez.
Presente.
Juan.
Here.
Jaeger.
Here.
Borelli.
Present.
Powers.
Here.
Speaker Adams.
Present.
Thank you. We'll now have today's invocation, which is delivered by Pastor Amzidi Hamathite of Wayside Baptist Church located at 1746 60 Broadway in Brooklyn.
Let us bow our heads. Most gracious and everlasting God of our Father, we thank you as we have gathered together in this august body for our city council meeting. We thank you for all the participants and the council members that are present. And God, as they have come to be able to gather together the information required to help move this city forward, we pray that you continue to shower them with wisdom, knowledge, and understanding. Give them the insight, the foresight, the intestinal fortitude to continue to keep striving that we have a better city in times like this. This we pray, in the name of he who died and rose again. Amen.
Thank you. We now ask, and we'll call on Councilmember Sandy Nurse to spread the invocation on the record.
Thank you, Majority Leader, and thank you, Reverend Hamathite, for joining us today. As a result of the Reverend's profound dedication and love for the community, a tribute to him was entered into the 112th Congressional Record by Congressman Ed Towns on November 17, 2011. The Reverend served as a board member for the Conference of National Black Churches and is honored to currently sit on the Leadership Council for Habitat for Humanity. In 2021, he was invited to sit on Mayor Eric Adams' COVID Recovery Roundtable Board and the Mayor's Office of Faith-Based and Community Partnership. I just want to thank you for being here. And I make a motion for unanimous consent to spread the invocation in full upon the record.
Thank you, Councilmember Nurse, and thank you for being with us here today. We'll now have the adoption of the minutes by Councilmember Althea Stevens.
I make a motion that the minutes of the stated meeting of September 29th, 2022 be adopted as printed.
Thank you. We're going to have now messages and papers from the mayor.
None.
Communication from city, county, and borough offices.
None.
Petitions and communications.
None.
Land use call-ups.
M-100 Innovative Urban Village.
Coupled on call-up vote, I now ask that the clerk take a roll call vote on today's land use call-up.
Lewis.
Permission to explain?
Go ahead.
I vote on all land use call-ups and all items on the general orders calendar. I vote aye. Thank you.
Thank you. Abreu.
Aye.
Ariola.
Aye.
Aviles.
Aye.
Ayala.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Botcher.
Aye.
Brannan.
Aye.
Brewer.
Aye.
Brooks Powers.
Aye.
Caban.
Aye.
Carr.
Aye.
De La Rosa.
Aye.
Dinowitz.
Aye.
Farias.
I vote aye on all.
Felice.
Aye.
Gennaro.
Aye.
Gutierrez.
Aye.
Hanif.
Aye.
Hanks.
Aye.
Thank you. Holden.
Aye.
Hudson.
I vote aye.
Joseph.
Aye.
Kagan.
Aye.
Krishnan.
Aye.
Lee. Rivera.
I vote aye.
Botcher.
Aye.
Brewer.
Aye.
Brooks Powers.
Aye.
Caban.
Aye.
Carr.
Aye.
De La Rosa.
Aye.
Dinowitz.
Aye.
Farias.
I vote aye on all.
Felice.
Aye.
Gennaro.
Aye.
Gutierrez.
Aye.
Hanif.
Aye.
Hanks.
Aye.
Thank you. Holden.
Aye.
Hudson.
I vote aye.
Thank you. Joseph.
Aye.
Kagan.
Aye.
Krishnan.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Marte.
Aye.
Mealy.
Aye.
Menon.
Aye.
Thank you. Moya.
I vote aye.
Thank you. Abreu.
Aye.
Ariola.
Aye.
Aviles.
Aye.
Ayala.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Botcher.
Aye.
Brannan.
Aye.
Brewer.
Aye.
Brooks Powers.
Aye.
Caban.
Aye.
Carr.
Aye.
De La Rosa.
Aye.
Dinowitz.
Aye.
Farias.
I vote aye on all.
Felice.
Aye.
Gennaro.
Aye.
Gutierrez.
Aye.
Hanif.
Aye.
Hanks.
Aye.
Thank you. Holden.
Aye.
Hudson.
I vote aye.
Joseph.
Aye.
Kagan.
Aye.
Krishnan.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Marte.
Aye.
Mealy.
Aye.
Menon.
Aye.
Thank you. Moya.
I vote aye.
Thank you. Narcisse.
Aye.
Nurse.
Aye.
Jose.
Aye.
Palladino.
Aye.
Wrestler.
Aye.
Richardson Jordan.
Aye.
Riley.
Aye.
Rivera.
I vote aye.
Salamanca. Sanchez.
Aye.
Thank you. Schulman.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Ung.
Aye.
Velasquez.
Aye.
Vernikoff. Williams.
I vote aye.
Juan.
Aye.
Jaeger.
Aye.
Borelli.
Aye.
Powers.
Aye.
Speaker Adams.
I vote aye.
Today's land use call-ups are adopted by a vote of 49 in the affirmative and zero in the negative. We'll now have communication from Speaker Adrian Adams.
Thank you, Majority Leader, and good afternoon, everyone. This week marks the 10th year anniversary since Superstorm Sandy devastated many of our communities and our city. The storm resulted in the deaths of 44 New Yorkers and left thousands of people without power, stable homes, and access to food and water. A decade later, our neighborhoods are still recovering. As a city, we must be more prepared for the coming storms. In the past two years alone, we have been heavily impacted by Tropical Storm Isaias, Hurricane Ida, among other extreme weather events. We are continuously feeling the effects of climate change, so it is critical that we take the necessary steps to make our neighborhoods more resilient and sustainable. Just yesterday, the Council Committee on Resiliency and Waterfronts, together with the Committee on Transportation and Infrastructure, held a joint oversight hearing on the 10th anniversary of Superstorm Sandy. In our districts and throughout the city, we're hosting events to commemorate the anniversary, reflect on the lessons learned, and compel adequate planning for the future. The Decennial Citywide Climate Adaptation Plan required by a law the council passed calls for the city to outline measures for resiliency that protects residents, property, and infrastructure. It prioritizes the most vulnerable areas and parts of the city historically harmed by a lack of environmental justice. This plan was due on September 30th and has yet to be published, and we are awaiting that plan, just like all New Yorkers. As a city, we must advance efforts to make our city more resilient and stronger, and an actionable, transparent plan is essential. Our city is mourning the loss of 47-year-old Carlos Santiago, a tow truck driver who was killed earlier this month in a horrific traffic accident. Carlos was helping a fellow motorist who had a disabled car on the side of the Long Island Expressway in Queens, where they were both struck by a drunk driver. As a council, we send love and condolences to his family, friends, and community for their loss. Earlier this week, New Yorkers celebrated Diwali, the festival of lights that reminds us about the triumph of light over darkness. It is an important celebration for our Hindu, Jain, and Sikh communities, and it is worthy of being a school holiday. I support efforts to officially place Diwali on the school calendar because our students should not have to choose between their faith and their education. On November 1st, the council will be hosting a Diwali celebration right here in the council chambers, and I invite you and your constituents to join us for a night of fun, culture, and community. Thank you to councilmembers Brewer, Farias, Gennaro, Krishnan, Lee, Rivera, Schulman, Ung, Williams, and Juan for co-hosting this celebration. In just a few days, colleagues, we will be celebrating Halloween. I hope everyone enjoys the holiday, whether you're trick-or-treating in your neighborhood, watching a scary movie, or just dressing up for fun. Have a safe time and a great time if you're celebrating. And finally, I'd like to acknowledge that November is National Native American Heritage Month. It's a time when we honor the history, contributions, and cultures of Indigenous peoples. It is important that we recognize that we are currently in the homeland of the Lenape. As a city and country, we must commit to meeting the needs of our Indigenous communities and addressing the disparities they continue to face as a result of historically being subjected to disenfranchisement and other genocidal harm from colonization. Now let's move on to our stated agenda. Today, we are voting on several legislative land use and finance items. We will be voting on the following land use items. Ninth Street rezoning will rezone a mid-block section of Ninth Street in the Gowanus area of Brooklyn within Community District 6 in Councilmember Hanif's district. It will also include a text amendment to designate an MIH area and a mixed-use district. The project will facilitate the development of a five-story residential building with an estimated 22 units, 25% of which will be affordable under the MIH program. This outcome represents a compromise that balances citywide housing needs with community priorities by simultaneously advancing affordable housing and industrial preservation in the aftermath of the previously approved Gowanus Neighborhood rezoning to create 85 units of housing, 3,000 of which will be affordable. Gateway 6, Gateway Site 26A and Phase 5, and UDAP amendment and HPD application that will facilitate a new eight-story mixed-use building with 191 affordable senior housing units and community facility in Councilmember Barron's district. In addition, an amendment to the Fresh Creek Urban Renewal Plan will facilitate the development of nine four-story buildings with approximately 560 affordable housing units. Finally, we will be voting on several related HPD, UDAP, and tax exemption applications in the Morrisania and Morris Heights sections of the Bronx. Morrisania Open Door will facilitate the development of approximately 23 affordable homeownership units in Councilmember Stevens' district. Morris Heights NCP will facilitate the construction of two six-story residential buildings with approximately 28 affordable homeownership units in Councilmember Sanchez and Stevens districts. Morrisania Clermont Village Open Door will facilitate the development of a two-family building with a total of 14 new units in Councilmember Riley and Councilmember Stevens' districts. It will include seven affordable homeownership units through the Open Door program and seven affordable rental units. Additionally, we will also be voting on a transparency resolution approving new designations and changes of certain organizations receiving funding in the expense budget. Lastly, the council will vote on the following pieces of legislation. Introduction 258A, sponsored by Councilmember Rita Joseph, would require the mayor to designate an agency or office in coordination with the Department of Transportation and Department of Parks and Recreation to report on feasible locations for public bathroom facilities across this city. This bill would also require that the agencies or offices incorporate public and community board input regarding locations suitable for public bathrooms. Introduction 291A, sponsored by Councilmember Carlina Rivera and Majority Whip Silvina Brooks-Powers, would require the Department of Transportation and the Department of Parks and Recreation to develop a citywide agency under a citywide greenway master plan with the goal of achieving a comprehensive network of greenways. Under the legislation, these agencies would create a working group tasked with identifying locations for possible development into greenways, establishing greenway design guidelines, and identifying opportunities for integrating green infrastructure and creating a list of early-action greenway projects. The bill would also require that these agencies report annually on the implementation of the greenway plan and engage with community boards on all proposals. Thank you to staff Elliot Lynn. Next, the council will be voting on a package of rat mitigation and sanitation legislation. New York City is currently experiencing a severe rat infestation problem, one that has impacted all communities. The increased number of rodents results in more property damage, food contamination, and disease transmission, as well as in an overall impact on New Yorkers' quality of life. The council is focused on improving the health and safety of our neighborhoods, and this legislative package would bolster efforts to address the surge of rodents throughout this city. Introduction 414A, sponsored by Councilmember Chio Sei, would require the Department of Health and Mental Hygiene to issue an annual report on the city's efforts in rat mitigation zones, submit the report to the Speaker of the Council and the mayor, and make the report publicly available online. The report would describe the metrics that the Department of Health uses to measure the efficacy of rat mitigation in each zone, as well as their outreach efforts. Introduction 442A, sponsored by Councilmember Eric Botcher, would require that before permitting authorizing certain construction work that is subject to rodent extermination is issued, the applicant certify that a licensed exterminator was retained to effectively treat the premises for rodent extermination. Introduction 459A, sponsored by Councilmember Sean Abreu, would require that the Department of Health and Mental Hygiene designate rat mitigation zones throughout the city. This bill would also allow the Department of Sanitation to determine the times during which buildings must set out their garbage and recycling for collection. Introduction 460A, also sponsored by Councilmember Abreu, would require buildings which receive two or more rodent-specific housing maintenance codes or two or more rodent-specific health code violations place their refuse in rodent-proof containers for at least two years. The bill permits the Department of Sanitation to waive this container requirement wherever it would cause an undue hardship or public safety hazard. Thank you to our staff Jessica Steinberg-Albino. Finally, as we conclude Domestic Violence Awareness Month, it is important that we continue to address gender-based violence and support its survivors with the care and services they need to heal. To end cycles of violence and address the trauma that it causes, we must work to create a safe environment where survivors have access to the stability, resources, and assistance that promote their health and safety. That is our collective responsibility in government, and with today's Support Survivors legislative package, the council is advancing the city's services for survivors of domestic and gender-based violence. The following bills are sponsored by our Women in Gender Equity Committee Chair Tiffany Caban. Introduction 153A would require the Office to End Domestic and Gender-Based Violence, or ENDGBV, in consultation with the Department of Social Services and Community-Based Organizations to establish a program to provide survivors of domestic and gender-based violence with a low-barrier grant and supportive services that help them with expenses related to maintaining housing. The bill would also require ENDGBV to report on the program on an annual basis. Introduction 154A would require ENDGBV to establish an online portal and written resource guide of available services for survivors of domestic and gender-based violence in New York City. The portal and guide would be available in the designated citywide languages. The guide would also be available in Braille. The portal would also include a link to other relevant city-run websites and portals that provide information on services for survivors in the city, along with a description of the types of such resources. The bill would also require ENDGBV to conduct outreach on the portal and guide and ensure the portal is secure and confidential to protect the privacy of survivors. And Resolution 111 would call upon New York State to pass legislation that would provide domestic violence survivors and their families with job-protected paid leave, similar to that of New York State's Paid Family Leave Law, to be used for any activities relating to their actual or perceived status as a domestic violence survivor or family member of a domestic violence survivor. And we thank our staff members Brenda McKinney and Anastasia Zemina. Thank you all for your attention. Now I turn it back into the hands of our Majority Leader.
Thank you, Speaker Adams. We're going to now move into discussion of general orders. We'll first hear from Councilmember Rivera, followed by Councilmember Barron.
Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak on my bill with Majority Whip Intro 291, and I want to also thank the Speaker for commemorating 10 years since Hurricane Sandy and everything our city has gone through and is still recovering from. I know in my own district, eight feet of water in many areas and a really unprecedented project called East Side Coastal Resiliency, in which we are actively rebuilding a greenway among amenities that are a part of a beloved park. And I know there are many long-term protections that have to take place and be implemented across the five boroughs, so I'm looking forward to being a part of that continued fight and effort. With greenways, this is something that should be a citywide plan, and all of us here today, I know we believe for our city, we need a future where New Yorkers of all backgrounds, ages, and abilities from every neighborhood and every borough can easily find open space and safely access active transportation. The city last issued a greenway plan in 1993 under Mayor Dinkins, but today, 30 years later, we are going to pass a citywide greenway plan bill that will create a comprehensive master plan, a vision for the future of greenways in New York City. And historically, it's been low-income neighborhoods and communities of color that have seen the least investment in greenway infrastructure. This legislation disrupts that pattern. It ensures every neighborhood and every borough is involved in the development of a master plan for the city that works for all New Yorkers. This bill requires community engagement and an outreach plan to build it out and to identify new greenways to link the existing network, and will be supported by groundbreaking city and federal funding that was announced by our Senator Schumer. So together, we can deliver New Yorkers a greenway master plan for future generations that leaves no neighborhood behind and finally be the city that is leading on green infrastructure and a city that puts pedestrians and cyclists first. So thank you for your support. I encourage everyone to vote aye.
Thank you. We'll now hear from Councilmember Barron, followed by Councilmember Hanif.
Thank you, my colleagues. I rise to encourage you to vote for a project in my district in the gateway facility for our seniors, not 20% affordable, not 40% affordable, not 50%, not 60%, not 80%, not 95%, not 99.9%, but 100% affordable. And I want to thank you for that, 100% affordable. And we negotiated, I want to thank Reverend David Brawley from the St. Paul's Community Baptist Church, they negotiated with us. It's important when we're getting housing for our seniors that they don't put them all in studios. We fight for the dignity of our seniors. You don't want anybody to come visit you and sit with you and see your whole house. When they're sitting with you, they see your bedroom, your kitchen, your living room. No, our seniors demand dignity. So give them a one-bedroom, so at least you could hide the bedroom from the guests and let them be in an apartment. So they had it like 70, 80 for studios and 20% for one-bedrooms, but we got them to do 50/50 for the respect of our seniors. Finally, my colleagues, I don't want to disappoint you and not say anything controversial, but capitalism has gone mad, and it's gone mad in the housing arena. Don't settle for the MIH of 20 and 25% affordability. That is not suitable. And listen to the name of the system, capitalism, which means the priority is capital, profit over people, greed over need. So all of you socialists, don't hide. Raise your hand if you're a socialist. Okay. Hi, Speaker. Anyway, so don't hide. Bye. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Barron.
For the present.
Congratulations on your deal. We're now going to go to Councilmember Hanif, followed by Councilmember Brooks Powers.
Thank you. Today, with the support of Community Board 6 and Brooklyn Borough President Antonio Reynoso, I will be voting in favor of the Ninth Street rezoning. I've always been a strong advocate for increasing affordable housing, particularly deeply affordable housing in our district. With the recent modifications, I believe this proposed development will balance the complex land use goals in our community and take a comprehensive approach to land use. The approved zoning district, which is two blocks outside of the recently approved Gowanus rezoning, will transform a current parking lot into housing that includes affordable units while also addressing the concerns about harmful impacts to the industrial business zone. The IBZ is home to almost 300 businesses and over 3,500 jobs for working-class people in Brooklyn. Preserving manufacturing and industrial space broadly in Gowanus is critical to ensuring working-class New Yorkers have access to good-paying jobs in their community. As a lifelong District 39 resident, I know well that our community lacks deeply affordable housing, and I know far too many working-class residents have been prohibited from finding a home in our community. This is why it has been a priority of my office to ensure all 56 points of agreement in the Gowanus Neighborhood Plan are followed and the promised 3,000 units of affordable housing are brought to this neighborhood. I appreciate all the community members, elected officials, and advocacy organizations who have voiced their thoughts on this application, and I look forward to continuing to build a comprehensive land use vision for our district together. I urge my colleagues to vote yes.
Thank you. We'll now go to Councilwoman Brooks Powers, followed by Councilwoman Joseph.
Thank you. I am excited to partner with Councilwoman Rivera on Intro 291 today, which would require the administration to protect and enhance our city's greenway system. The city has about 400 miles' worth of greenways, and these greenways, like the popular Jamaica Bay Greenway, are safe scenic rights of way that provide New Yorkers ways to commute, exercise, and enjoy the natural beauty of the city. Our greenways are also important as we work to combat climate change. Greenways can help absorb stormwater and runoff and prevent flooding. This network also helps keep temperatures down by fighting back against the urban heat effect. However, our greenways often fail to connect with one another, and some neighborhoods are deprived of access to the city's greenway network. By requiring the Preserving manufacturing and industrial space broadly in Gowanus is critical to ensuring working-class New Yorkers have access to good-paying jobs in their community. As a lifelong District 39 resident, I know well that our community lacks deeply affordable housing. And I know far too many working-class residents have been prohibited from finding a home in our community. This is why it has been a priority of my office to ensure all 56 points of agreement in the Gowanus Neighborhood Plan are followed and the promised 3,000 units of affordable housing are brought to this neighborhood. I appreciate all the community members, elected officials, and advocacy organizations who have voiced their thoughts on this application. And I look forward to continuing to build a comprehensive land use vision for our district together. I urge my colleagues to vote yes.
Thank you. We'll now go to Councilwoman Brooks Powers, followed by Councilwoman Joseph.
Thank you. I am excited to partner with Councilwoman Rivera on Intro 291 today, which would require the administration to protect and enhance our city's greenway system. The city has about 400 miles' worth of greenways. And these greenways, like the popular Jamaica Bay Greenway, are safe scenic rights of way that provide New Yorkers ways to commute, exercise, and enjoy the natural beauty of the city. Our greenways are also important as we work to combat climate change. Greenways can help absorb stormwater and runoff and prevent flooding. This network also helps keep temperatures down by fighting back against the urban heat effect. However, our greenways often fail to connect with one another. And some neighborhoods are deprived of access to the city's greenway network. By requiring the creation of a master plan and mandating community engagement on greenway development, we are working to ensure the city equitably maintains and invests in this vital infrastructure as we move towards an environmentally sustainable future. This transformative piece of legislation will help to increase the use of micromodal transportation and make open spaces more accessible to all New Yorkers. And I'm proud to sponsor it. I also want to thank Councilmember Joseph for her advocacy on the bathroom bill. Now more than ever, public space is so important to New Yorkers, especially in the wake of the pandemic. Public restrooms are a crucial feature of our public space. And access to safe, clean restrooms is too limited across the city. Public restroom access is good for everybody, regardless of who they are or where they live. And so I'm so excited to see these two pieces of legislation come through the Transportation and Infrastructure Committee as our first legislation to come through this committee this year. And that's because we wanted to be thoughtful and have transformative legislation coming out of it for all New Yorkers. And I'm so proud to stand with my colleagues on this.
Thank you. We hear from Councilwoman Joseph, and finally, Councilwoman Stevens.
Thank you, Majority Powers. Thank you, Madam Speaker. Thank you, Majority Whip Brooks. Today is an extremely exciting day. I'm thrilled that I'll be passing my first bill, Intro 258, which marks an important first step towards ensuring all New Yorkers have access to public restrooms. Our bill will require the Department of Parks and DOT to publish a report, Feasible Locations to Install a Public Restroom in Every Zip Code Across the Five Boroughs. Every New Yorker can think back to a time when they were out and about in the neighborhood and they had nowhere to go. The city lacks public restroom is a universal problem, but in particularly affects the elderly, delivristas, cab drivers, women, pregnant women, children, and individuals with underlying health conditions. While other modern cities have taken steps to prioritize public restroom access, New York, the greatest city in the world, continues to lack behind. Currently, we rank 93rd out of the 100 largest U.S. cities in the numbers of public restrooms per capita. With today's passage of Intro 258, our city is saying loudly and proudly that we recognize that the status quo is not good enough. And we're going to work to bring bathrooms to every neighborhood across the five boroughs. I want to give a big thank you to Manhattan Borough Mark Levine for his partnership on this legislation. He has been an outspoken champion on this issue for years. I'm grateful to work with him to see public bathrooms installed across the city. Thanks also to Teddy Segal of Got2Go, a terrific young advocate who's been an invaluable spokesperson for our effort. Thanks as well to our incredible Speaker Adrienne Adams for her leadership for this body and allowing this bill to get voted on, as well as Majority Whip Brooks Powers, who shepherded this bill through the Transportation Committee, and all of my colleagues who will vote today. Thank you.
Thank you. And now we'll hear from Councilmember Stevens.
As we're in the process of reimagining housing in New York City, ensuring equitable housing and accessibility to homeownership is essential in the process for our community. This is why I'm encouraging all my colleagues to vote in support of the Morris Heights NCP Cluster Morris Sina Open Door Project. Historically, District 16 has been oversaturated with shelters and rental units. And that is why I'm excited for this project and for the project and the members of the West Bronx as we are going to be putting folks on the path to generational wealth with homeownership. This investment for our community is vital. And I look forward to future opportunities to bring affordable homeownership to the great members of Community District 16.
Thank you. Do any other members sign up? Seeing none, we'll move to the report of special committees.
None.
Reports of standing committees.
Report of the Committee on Finance, Preconsidered Reso 363 Transparency Reso.
Coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Land Use, LU's 110 through 112, Ninth Street rezoning.
Approved with modifications and referred to the City Planning Commission pursuant to Section 1970 of the New York City Charter.
LU 113 and Reso 369, and LU 114 and Reso 370, Gateway Site 26A and Phase 5.
Coupled on general orders.
LU 116 and Reso 356A, 79, 18, 164th Street rezoning.
Approved with modifications and referred to the City Planning Commission pursuant to Section 1970 of the New York City Charter.
LU 119 and Reso 371, and LU 120 and Reso 372, Morris Sina Open Door.
Coupled on general orders.
LU 121 and Reso 373, and LU 122 and Reso 374, Morris Heights NCP.
Coupled on general orders.
LU 123 and Reso 375, and LU 124 and Reso 376, Morris Sina Claremont Village Open Door.
Coupled on general orders.
LU 125 and Reso 377 Gateway.
Coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Sanitation and Solid Waste Management, Intros 414A, 442A, 459A, and 460A Rat Mitigation Package.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Transportation and Infrastructure, Intro 258A, Report on Public Bathroom.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
Intro 291A Citywide Greenway Plan.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Women and Gender Equity, Intros 153A and 154A Programs for Survivors of Domestic and Gender-Based Violence.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
General Orders Calendar, LU 110 and Reso 378 through LU 112 and Reso 380, Ninth Street rezoning.
Coupled on general orders, I now ask that the Clerk take a roll call vote on all of the items coupled on today's general orders calendar.
Ariola.
I vote aye on all, except for Intros 442A, 459A, 460A, and 153A.
Thank you. Aviles.
Aye on all.
Thank you. Ayala.
Aye on all.
Barron.
May I be excused to explain my vote?
Go ahead.
I want to vote no on the Ninth Street project, Councilmember Hanif. However, I want to acknowledge that she did an excellent job. And sometimes developers can be very stubborn. And I know she tried to get the best deal possible. But sometimes they're just stubborn. They're not going to move. I know she was able to get them down. But for five units out of 21 being affordable, I want to be consistent in voting for projects. And this is why the MIH needs to be changed. So affordability is not 20 and 25%, but should be much higher. But I want to commend you for your efforts. But in principle, I would vote no on that project and aye on all the rest.
Thank you. Batshir.
Should I explain my vote?
Go ahead.
I want to thank everyone who helped get me to today. We're passing my first bill today. I'm very excited that it's a bill that's going to address a big issue in New York, and that is rat proliferation in New York City. Look, New York's never been an easy place to live. It's kind of a rat race, if you know what I'm saying. But we've got to do more to address the rat problem in New York City. And construction sites have been contributing to that. And what we're saying with this bill is that if you build a building, you've got to hire an exterminator because you're digging up the ground, you're unearthing stuff that's there, you're creating places for rats to find harbage and shelter. So before you get your building permits, you're going to have to hire an exterminator. It's common sense. I want to thank the other members of the Rat Pack, Councilmembers Ose, Nurse, and Abreu. And I really feel good about this package of rat legislation. We've got a lot more to do. But I think this is going to put us forward on this issue. Thank you. I vote aye.
Thank you. Brennan.
Aye.
Brewer.
Aye.
Brooks Powers.
Permission to explain my vote?
Go ahead.
So I first want to congratulate my colleagues, Councilmembers Batshir, Ose, Abreu, and Nurse, and so many others for their work on this package of legislation. This is a major quality-of-life issue for everyone. So again, I appreciate the work that you each have put into moving forward the Rat Action Plan. So congratulations to you. I also want to commend Councilmember Caban for her work on her important pieces of legislation. I served as a part of the mayor's office to combat domestic violence. And I know how important it is to ensure survivors have supportive services and resources to obtain safe housing and also to ensure survivors have knowledge of those resources. So I'm so grateful to Councilmember Caban for her efforts to move this legislation forward and to help survivors get the help they need. And I proudly vote aye on all, especially the Greenway Plan. I thank the committee staff, Elliot, Jessica, Chima, Kevin, Rick, and Sam for all of their work in making today possible. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, and also Sydney and Renee. I don't want to get in trouble for my staff. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Caban.
Permission to explain my vote?
Go ahead.
Thank you. First of all, I want to thank my colleagues and all of the folks that made this possible. But you know, this session, the Committee on Women and Gender Equity has been uncovering the barriers to accessing services that survivors face. And we've heard from courageous survivors who testified, telling us their personal stories, identifying institutional and policy-based factors that contributed to the lack of access to the services we owe them. And you know, a couple of things are important here. The link between domestic violence and homelessness is well-established, with domestic violence as a leading contributor of family homelessness, not just here, but nationally. And not only that, but survivors could not have been more explicit in naming an undeniable truth. They said it loud and clear. This will materially make them and our city safer from violence. And so a vote for this package is a vote for safety. And we can't just be a city that punishes people for violence. We can't just cynically exploit the pain of survivors to direct more money to policing and incarceration. We actually have to meet survivors' needs. And that's what this package does. You know, especially that first program that addresses the economic precarity that we have heard from survivors is a central barrier to their leaving dangerous situations and accessing services. So this is really powerful and a first of its kind, really, in the country, along with that online portal and written resource guide that is truly accessible. Because we know that we do have a lot of services, but they're housed in different places. They're hard to access. Maybe there are language issues. And so this makes it so that they can take advantage of what does exist while we continue to build out more resources. So really proud to vote aye on all, but especially to vote aye, you know, against violence and for safety. And also, congrats to the Rat Pack. Thank you.
Thank you. Carr.
Just like to disclose on the record that we're funding CUNY in this transparency resolution. And my spouse is a student at CUNY. And with that said, I'll be voting no on introductions 153A, 442A, 459A, and 460A. An aye on the rest.
Thank you. De La Rosa.
Aye.
Thank you. Dinowitz.
Aye, on all.
Farias.
I vote aye on all.
Felice.
Permission to explain my vote?
Go ahead.
You know, I love comedy. One of my favorite movies is called Rat Race. It's a funny movie with the actor from Mr. Bean. I can't remember his name. So I love the movie Rat Race. But I don't like to see rats racing in our streets, in our subways, in vacant lots. So I want to congratulate the Rat Pack on their warranted legislation. I vote aye on all. Thank you.
Gennaro.
Aye.
Thank you. Gutierrez.
Aye.
Hanif.
Aye.
Hanks.
Aye on all.
Thank you. Holden.
Aye on all, except for Intro 153A, which I vote no.
Hudson.
Aye on all, with the exception of LU 110-112, for which I abstain. And I'd like to disclose on the record that my domestic partner is employed by Planned Parenthood.
Thank you. Joseph.
Aye on all. I'm not explaining.
Kagan.
Aye on all. And I would like to say for the record that my daughter is a CUNY student. And we are financing CUNY transparency resolutions. That's for the record. Aye for all.
Krishnan.
Aye on all.
Lee.
Aye on all.
Marta.
Aye on all.
Emili.
Aye on all.
Menon.
Aye on all.
Thank you. Moya.
I vote aye.
Thank you. Narcisse.
Aye on all, get rid of the rats.
Nurse.
Aye on all. I'm not going to explain. I just want to congratulate Councilmembers Abreu, Ose, and Batshir for your work. I don't know why there's opposition to these bills, but just congratulations to passing them.
Thank you. Ose.
Permission to explain my vote?
Go ahead.
You hear that? Did you hear that? I'm not saying that the passing of this package is going to get rid of all of those sounds, but it's a step in the right direction. We still need full containerization, citywide containerization here in New York City to combat the rodent infestation that resides in all of our neighborhoods, or most of our neighborhoods. I vote aye on all. I'm really proud to be a part of the New York City Council's first Rat Pack that is taking this seriously, as we could all tell, in combating, I guess, the rising rodent infestation in New York. So thank you to Speaker Adams for your support in this legislation. Brooklyn Borough President Antonio Reynoso for his partnership and support on this legislation. We have a lot more work to do, but we are really laying down the groundwork for when we get to a place of citywide trash containerization. Thank you.
Thank you. Halladino.
I vote aye on all, except for 442A, 459A, 460A, and 153A, in which I vote no.
Thank you. Wrestler.
I will vote aye on all and just congratulate my colleagues
I will, uh, vote aye on all, and just congratulate my colleagues who did some really good work on this, on the package of bills. Proud to support it.
Richardson, Jordan.
Permission to explain my vote?
Go ahead.
Uh, so first, I, I definitely want to say that I'm, I'm really excited about my fellow sanitation committee members and, uh, passing the legislation for the rat mitigation zones. It's an honor to co-sponsor, an honor to vote for them in committee, and an honor to vote for them again now. We should be looking at a data-driven solution for addressing, uh, the rats. And then second, I just wanted to say, um, congrats to Chair Caban and to my Women and Gender Equity Committee, um, for their survivor's package. I am personally myself a survivor of domestic violence who personally myself could have well been homeless if not to have been blessed to be able to stay with my parents. So be, so being able to have some support for, uh, those who are survivors of domestic violence, uh, particularly in the space of housing and economic support, is, uh, very close to my heart, and I'm very glad that we're passing that legislation as well. I am aye on all. Uh, thank you.
Thank you. Riley.
I was trying to think of a rat joke, but I couldn't think of one. So, aye on all.
Rivera.
Congratulations to my colleagues, I vote aye.
Salamanca. Sanchez.
Permission to explain my vote?
Go ahead.
Thank you. Um, I also want to join in congratulating our colleagues, uh, in particular, Councilmember Carolina Rivera and, uh, Brooks Powers, on the Greenway Plan. In my district, the Harlem River, uh, uh, Greenway has been a piece of advocacy for over two decades, something that we've been trying to get done, and we haven't been. So I look forward to, to your partnership, um, and working. The baby is going to cry. Okay, um, okay, I'm also, like, from, and, um, and I also just want to congratulate Chair Joseph on, on the bathrooms legislation. This is, you know, secretly, and as, as she has said in her own words, one of the biggest barriers that, uh, some of our homeless neighbors have, um, you know, and they, they are forced to interact with B E, and they get summonses and all of this. Uh, and so our city taking a step, uh, to, to bring bathrooms to more public areas is, is really great. So thank you, uh, thank you, House. Aye on all.
Thank you, Councilmember. Schulman.
Aye on all.
Stevens.
Aye on all.
Ung.
Aye on all.
Velazquez.
Aye on all.
Vernikov.
Permission to vote on the land, land use call-ups, sorry.
Go ahead.
Aye on all, except no on 442A, 459A, 460A, and 153A. Thank you.
Thank you. Williams.
I'd just like to disclose to the record that I'm a student at CUNY, and I enthusiastically vote aye on all.
Thank you. Juan.
Aye on all.
Jaeger.
Aye on all, with the exception of Intro 258, Intro 291, Intro 442, 459, and 460. Thank you.
Thank you. Abreu.
Permission to explain my vote?
Go ahead.
As someone who has lived through an eviction as a child and who built a career as a tenants' rights attorney, protecting and comforting desperate families on the brink of homelessness, I cannot in good conscience vote for the Ninth Street rezoning. Usually, we fight to force developers to build more affordable units. This week, we cut that in half. It's time for our wealthiest districts, which have lagged well behind the rest of the city, to start building their fair share of affordable housing. I respectfully abstain on land use items 110, 11, and 12, and vote aye on the rest. Thank you.
Thank you. Borrelli.
Permission to explain briefly?
Go ahead.
Thank you. So I just wanted to answer two questions that were asked today, uh, two things that were posed. The first, uh, the actor that played, uh, in Rat Race, uh, who was famous for Mr. Bean, uh, his name is Rowan Atkinson, Rowan Atkinson. He's also in a great show called Black Adder. Uh, the other question was why there'd be any opposition to, uh, some of the rat bills. And I want to say this, if I lived where, uh, many of you lived, uh, in districts where you're plagued with some of these problems, I would be voting with you, and, and frankly, I'm very happy that these bills are passing, and I'm very happy that this will make a significant impact in the majority of districts in the city of New York, but not all districts. So some of the rules that we're making today are minor inconvenience, some of them are more major inconvenience, to people who live, uh, in other parts of the city that, that aren't plagued with this problem. Some of us live in bedroom communities, and now we'll face violations for putting our pals out too early, when there was no problem with putting our pals out too early. Other stuff, uh, along similar lines. So I'm really happy it's passing, uh, but if you guys do want to kill some animals, wait for it, if you guys want to kill some animals, we have a deer problem on Staten Island, where not only, uh, are they problematic, but they're giving Lyme disease to the kids in my district, and the kids in David Carr's district, and Camila Hanks's district, at record numbers, uh, and we're trying to get some support for culling the, the herd, which is a, a polite way of saying kill them. Uh, and I suspect, though, that because they're cute, there'll be some opposition to them, but nonetheless, they are, uh, a real problem for us. So I vote aye on all, except 442A, 459A, 460A, 153A, and Reso 111. Thank you very much.
Powers.
I vote aye.
Speaker Adams.
I want to congratulate all of my colleagues who are passing legislation for the very first time today. I am especially proud of the legislation that is moving forward, that is affecting quality of life for all New Yorkers, as well as instances of domestic violence and gender-based violence. I congratulate this council for, uh, passing this great legislation today. With that, I do vote aye on all.
All items on today's general order count are adopted by a vote of 50 in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and zero abstentions, with the exception of Intro 442A, adopted by a vote of 45 in the affirmative, five in the negative, zero abstentions. Intro 459A, adopted by a vote of 45 in the affirmative, five in the negative, and zero abstentions. Intro 460A, adopted by a vote of 45 in the affirmative, five in the negative, and zero abstentions. Intro 153A, adopted by a vote of 44 in the affirmative, six in the negative, zero abstentions. Land use items 110, 11, 110, 111, 112, and accompanying resolutions adopted by a vote of 47 in the affirmative, one in the negative, and two abstentions. Introduction 258-A, adopted by a vote of 49 in the affirmative, one in the negative, and zero abstentions. Introduction 291A, adopted by a vote of 49 in the affirmative, one in the negative, and zero abstentions. And the revised land use call-ups vote is 50 in the affirmative and zero negative. We will now move to the introduction and reading of bills.
All bills have been referred to committees as indicated on today's agenda.
Thank you. We'll now move into the discussion of resolutions. Would any like, any like to speak on today's resolution? Okay, thank you. We'll now have a voice vote on today's resolution. If you wish to vote against or abstain from today's resolution, please notify the Legislative Document Unit by email, or by approaching the day before the vote. I'll now read today's resolution into the record. Resolution 111 calls on New York State to pass legislation that would provide domestic violence survivors and their families with job-protected paid leave, similar to that of New York State's paid family leave law, to be used for any activities relating to the actual or perceived status as a domestic violence survivor or family member of domestic violence survivor. Will all those in favor please say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, say nay? Any abstentions? The ayes have it. We'll now move into general discussion. We will start with Councilmember Hanif, followed by Councilmember Ariola.
I just wanted to, um, highlight two bills being introduced today that I'm co-sponsoring and encourage my colleagues to sign on to. The first is Intro 790, led by Councilmember Brewer, which would allow asylum seekers to obtain ID NYC cards by making certain federal documents eligible as proof of identity. This is absolutely critical for these folks, being able to access a number of city benefits that they need to be able to thrive in their new home. The second is Intro 806, led by Criminal Justice Chair Rivera and Speaker Adams, which will create jail population review teams. These teams would bring together stakeholders, including DOC, DOP, MoCJ, CHS, and public defenders twice a month to review and identify cases where detained people can be safely released into the community. This is critical to our goals of decarceration and closing Rikers by 2027. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now go to Councilmember Ariola, followed by Councilmember Kagan.
Thank you, Majority Leader. On June 10th, middle school students Ryan Wong and Daniel Persad left their homes with the intention of going to school. What happened that day to change their minds and direction will always remain a mystery. Some say it may be the beautiful weather that caused the young students to vary from their original plan, and decide to skip school and go to the shore with some friends. Unfortunately, Ryan and Daniel did not return safely home, and instead drowned after falling into Jamaica Bay in an area where swimming was prohibited. Shortly after meeting with the school community and hearing about the harrowing events that took place when the school learned that the students had drowned, I wondered how soon the parents were notified that the students had not been marked present at school that day. After further inquiry, I came to learn that every school within the DOE has their own policy of absentee notification. Most schools have an automated system that alerts parents and guardians of a child's absence from school. However, there is no set time for that notification. I found schools who notify absenteeism at noon, some after dismissal time, and many at 6:00 PM or later. In a world where both parents and guardians are more often than not working, and unable to constantly check apps like Life360 to see where their child is, early notification from the school that a child has not been marked present is important so that the process of finding that child can begin. The timely alert could be life-saving. I saw it in my own district on June 10th, and that is why I'm introducing Resolution 361, calling on the DOE to institute early notification of a student's absence, which will allow the parent or guardian to respond in a proper and timely fashion. Resolution 361 calls for the DOE to issue a policy that notification of a student's absence should be no later than 9:00 AM for elementary school, school students, and second period for middle and high school students, so that the caregivers can know at the earliest time that their child has not been marked present. This policy can save lives and protect a child from be, whatever other dangerous situation they may be facing. I ask my colleagues for support on Resolution 361 and to sign on and support it. I'd also like to wish my hometown of Howard Beach a happy 125th anniversary. Ten years ago, we were devastated by Superstorm Sandy. Two years ago, the COVID-19 pandemic completely shut down our community, and this year, we celebrate the community with an after carnival to signify its anniversary and comeback.
Thank you, Councilmember. Thank you. Councilmember Ariola, we're going to Councilman Kagan, followed by Councilwoman Barron.
Thank you, Majority Leader. Every 10 years after census, uh, state, city, and federal districts face redistricting, and I want to talk about it today. According to the city charter, the criteria to draw these districts are very simple. All districts should be compact, should include communities of interest, that should have similar demographics and similar socioeconomic status. I proudly represent more than 170,000 people, residents of South and Brooklyn. And don't get me wrong, Bay Ridge is a great, beautiful neighborhood, but it is very, very different and very distant from Coney Island and Marlborough Houses, with many tall, nice buildings. According to the new lines, these two neighborhoods, Marlborough Houses and Bay Ridge, are connected through a 5.5 miles-long tunnel, two blocks, uh, very thin, 86th and 84th Street. How far is it to residents of both, Bay Ridge and Marlborough Houses? Another outrageous decision by the Districting Commission was to cut Michelama Housing Cooperative Orbis in two pieces, and to give three out of five buildings in that housing complex to 48th District. I am very grateful to many of my amazing colleagues, and to community leaders from all over South and Brooklyn who expressed their outrage. I learned that similar absurd and incompetent decisions by the Commission were made about more than 12 council districts in New York City. I stand together in solidarity with all of my colleagues who filed objections to Council Speaker and to the Districting Commission demanding justice to communities and to neighborhoods we represent. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We'll now hear from Councilwoman Barron, followed by Councilwoman Brewer.
Uh, thank you. My colleagues, there's an African proverb that says, "Take care of those who may have lost their teeth because they took care of you when you were teething." And that is the protection of our seniors. I have a bill, Intro 787, that would make it more difficult for a landlord to evict an elderly or a senior, uh, person. They would have to provide information to the Commission on Human Rights, and the Commission will evaluate that information to base, and, and make the basis whether the eviction is reasonable, affordable to the senior, and whether all of the legal apparatuses were followed for those seniors. In addition to that, this would also require the landlord and the city to help the senior provide, uh, provide the senior with legal assistance. We should make it very difficult for people to evict our seniors. Oftentimes, they're taken advantage of because they may not have computer skills, they may not understand everything, and they may have some difficulties, uh, navigating this complicated system. So this bill, and I hope we all sign on to it, would at least say, you're going to have to really go through a lot to evict our seniors, and they have to be assisted legally, or else the eviction will be nullified. So I encourage all of you to, um, help our seniors, because you know, the bottom line, capitalism has gone mad.
Thank you, Councilwoman Barron. We'll hear from Councilwoman Brewer, followed by Councilwoman Emili.
Thank you very much. Um, I do want to say to the family of Joseph and Kona, who was killed, uh, when he got caught in an MTA train door at Columbus Circle, how sad we are. Was 20 years old, he had become a member of Local One, stagehands at the Metropolitan Opera at such an early age, very talented, and, um, it's a very sad story. I know it will be investigated, but our condolences to his family, and to the Met, and to Local One. Um, I'm here to talk about Intro 790, which Councilmember Hanif mentioned it, but it is true that when you come across the border, you end up with federal papers, not the usual documentation. And, um, I know that as a practice, to the credit of the mayor's office, they are allowing ID, municipal ID to be, uh, gotten with these papers, but we want to codify it because those, that ID is helpful when you still can't get your regular ID. That's a long story with the federal government. Number two, two resolutions that also, as you can imagine, ask for fun, money, funding from the federal government for the wonderful asylum seekers, and also standards to be met for children seeking asylum. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And finally, we'll hear from Councilwoman Emili.
Yes, I want to, um, take this opportunity to ask my colleagues to sign on to Intro 787, and all of us will be a senior one day, and I, one day, yes, requesting that we will start building some housing for seniors, and this legislation would make sure that you can't just throw our seniors out to the curb. And I want to make sure everyone know, um, this domestic violence month, love should never hurt, so please know that. And I just want to thank all my colleagues who, um, prayed for me while my mother was in the hospital, and I want to thank, um, the Speaker's office. I shouldn't have to call the administration to get a bed for anyone. It took 24 hours to get my mother a bed, and it was so sad that if I wasn't there to advocate, and I want to make sure that people do the right thing, but it's so sad that you had to do extra things to get people taken care of. So I'm looking forward to being an advocate with, uh, Mercedes to make sure this does not happen to any other senior, to make sure that they should never have to stay in an emergency room for 24 hours. So thank you.
Thank you. We have, uh, Councilwoman Narcisse.
Now, I heard you loud and clear, and as a nurse, I would say it's not acceptable, and whatever we can do together, and especially when it comes to our seniors. And I heard, um, CM Barron just mentioned, yes, they invested time for us, we're standing on their shoulder, and whatever can, we can do, from housing to taking care of the seniors, I'm on. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other members signed up, uh, I'll now call on Speaker Adrian Adams to, oh, sorry, I have to read, uh, just a revised vote count. Uh, just updating a vote count, today's vote of Intro 442A was adopted by a vote of 44 in the affirmative and six in the negative. Intro 459A, adopted by a vote of 44 in the affirmative and six against, and Intro 460A, adopted by a vote of 44 in the affirmative and six against. I'll now call on Speaker Adrian Adams to close out today's stated meeting.
Thank you, Majority Leader. The stated meeting of October 27th, 2022, is hereby adjourned.